I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. Honorable, please call the roll.
Mr. LaButeus.
President.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
President.
Mr. Rath.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
And Ms. Hall.
Here.
We have nine here this evening. Next on the agenda is the invocation by Mr. LaButeus. Please rise, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, the King, pray this evening. Thank you for this time that we could come together and discuss the issues of the city. As I ask you, be with our conversation, help it to be fruitful, and be with our discussions, help it to be your vision for the city. Be with our time this evening. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. LaButeus. Next on our agenda this evening is caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything pertinent to the agenda tonight. Do we have any? Mr. President. Mr. Marmee.
I would like to excuse Mr. Lang.
Pledge by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. All in favor, say to Bob by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. Mr. Lang will be excused. Do we have anything else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Sasse.
Also under caucus is reference to ordinance 18-16, which if you recall, two weeks ago was tabled to a date certain, today's date. That was for the purpose of allowing citizens in the affected area to lodge objections to the assessment if they want. We have received a number of those assessments and have determined that we would need to create an equalization board to allow those citizens the opportunity to express their objection and for that board then to make a report to council with regard to the project. As a result, obviously, we're going to need more time before council can consider 18-16. I've discussed this with both Mr. Marmee and Mr. Rath, and I believe they're asking, they're going to be asking council now on that basis to table 18-16 indefinitely.
So 18-16 has been tabled till July 2nd, which is today, so it will be coming off the table, and so now we need another motion to do something with it.
That is correct.
Thank you. Mr. Sasse. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
I'll make a motion to table 18-16 indefinitely.
Second.
Motion to table by Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Rath. Motion to table has no discussion, right, Director Sasse, so we just go ahead and vote?
Correct.
Honorable, please call the roll.
Mr. LaButeus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Upstate.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Eight-four and one abstentions, so that will be tabled to a date uncertain, and so we'll just have to bring it off the table.
Correct.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have minutes of our June 4, 2018 meeting. Is a motion approved thus?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Frazier, second by Mr. LaButeus. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. That passes. We have two reports this evening from standing committees, one from service and one from capital improvements. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under reports from city officials, we have one from Barb Jobs, our city income tax administrator, the income tax revenue report for the period ending June 15, 2018. Without objection, that will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda is comments from citizens. There are two places for comments from citizens this evening. One is now, and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone for this first section? Please raise your hand. Ma'am? You just give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Kim Beam. My temporary address until Friday is 91 East North Street, Newark, Ohio. I come before you, I've been here before you before, about constitutional issues, about violating my rights, and I want to address it even further this evening. On or about June 4, I entered the Licking County Administration Building to address my, use my First Amendment rights for a redress of grievances of my government, my county government. I was stopped in the elevator and taken off the elevator by a Newark police officer, Detective George Romano, who my understanding is a drug cop. Anyone who knows me at all knows I have no drug issues whatsoever and have never had any drug issues. I've been very honest about this all my life. I smoked a joint one time in 1976, and I nailed. That's the totality of it. So I don't, shouldn't have a drug cop coming after me on an elevator at a county building where, by the way, he has no jurisdiction. I advised him he had no jurisdiction, but it was clear I was either coming off that elevator or I was going to jail. Who knows why? It was very disturbing that as I came off the elevator, Chief Connell was there to support him. Again, Chief Connell has no jurisdiction in the county administration building. Also, they brought along, or arrived very shortly after, was Officer Duncan. I think he was just doing what he was told to do. He seemed to be, you know, he didn't in any way engage in any of this. I was told I had to leave the building. I wasn't told why. I was just told I had to leave the building. This is not the first time my First Amendment rights have been denied in this city by the county or by the city in some place, sometimes. I've gone to, I went to the county commissioners. They were surprised that the city police were in the administration building taking action towards me. Maybe next time I just let you guys arrest me. It sounds to me like you've got a drug problem enough in this city that when you have a drug cop, he should be focusing on the drug issue, not on playing games that some leftover from the Oswald administration is trying to perpetuate. Chief Connell sent me a copy of his call card for this, no report, the call card, and it indicated that Paul Sawyers wanted a wellness, a welfare check. Now, if you look at Black's Law, Black's Law Dictionary, it'll tell you what a welfare check's about. It's when somebody is concerned about some, you know, like the elderly or someone who can't take care of themselves, that they go to their house and check on them, or go to where they are and check on them. Why on earth did we have a drug cop and Barry Connell in the lobby of the administration building doing a welfare check on me? I think they need, I think Barry Connell needs to answer for this. I think George Romano needs to answer for this. Romano, I checked out, is a, my understanding is he works for Newark, but he's also codes into Ohio Drug Enforcement. If he thinks that allows him room in the administration building to exercise his jurisdiction, he needs to think again. I was told by Licking County Sheriff's Office that he was an employee of the county. Well, I follow the money. I went over to Michael Smith's office and said, "Is this guy on your payroll?" I know he's not on the payroll. The money from code comes from the Ohio Treasurer through the Ohio Civil Justice System. And then, looking through the statute to see if I could find more, I saw information on public safety directors with respect to this. So I came to, over to Dr. Baum's office, and when I asked, he was not in, I asked Cindy Wetzel about it. Cindy Wetzel told me that, I said, "Well, who oversees code?" And she says, "Mayor Hall." It's a multi-jurisdictional law enforcement thing. I'm sorry, Mayor Hall, you do a lot of things, and you do a lot of things well, but you're not over code. And when I told her, "Let's not make ourselves a foolish when we go down this path," what did she do? She kicked me out of this building. She told me to get out. She made me, she followed me to the elevator and told me that I would not talk with, to her like that. I'm sorry that she didn't understand. It's unfortunate that she doesn't understand, but just like the boys didn't have any right to kick me out of the administration building, this is a public building also, I created no problem. If I had been creating a problem, she should have been calling the police. I wanted to stop. I've been putting up with this nonsense for almost eight years now. Doug Sassen was in at the very beginning. If Doug Sassen had told the truth in 2011, instead of making a circus of this whole thing, and what Doug Sassen looked at in 2011 has since come to be proven. I was telling the truth all along, and everyone else had lied. It is all audio recorded. But has Doug Sassen done anything to correct it? No. All he does is let this go on. It's time for it to stop. Do you want, I don't know if you want me to bring the civil rights people in. I've got a Baltimore attorney barking at me to sue the city of Newark and the commissioners. I'm like, "If you guys want to do this pro bono, I'll be glad to sue them." But do we have to really go that far? Can't we act like adults? I mean, you've got a drug problem, you've got a huge drug problem in this town. Get your drug cop working on the drug problem instead of playing Paul Sawyers, you know, Again, I know you don't answer to these things, but I bring them to your attention because somebody needs to do something about it, and I will make it very public. I learned a lot sitting here tonight when the people from St. Francis spoke. People from St. Francis, St. Vincent's, DePaula do some incredible things in this city. I might just have to let them know that they can't get their problems solved because the city's drug cop is violating my constitutional rights in the county administration building where he has no jurisdiction. He needs to be disciplined for that. Mayor Hall, I believe that's your position to discipline him. That's where the oversight is.
You want to wrap it up?
I'm done. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Okay. I can do this at the end.
I'm sorry? I thought you were doing it.
I can do this at the end if you'd like. It's good to be long.
It's up to you. We can wait, or we can do it now, whatever you want to do.
I think we're ready.
Anyone else?
David Doni, 231 John Rees Parkway, Patasko, Ohio. I'm here on behalf of Newark Kiwanis to thank the city once again for their tremendous efforts in helping us with our Strawberry Festival, which was in early June. Let's see, Service Director David Rhodes, but he was very helpful. The mayor was extremely helpful. Buster Prince, Street Department, was extremely helpful. We all understand that in the last three days, it's kind of an inconvenience for the city and the county, but it was a wonderful experience, and I just want to remind everybody that the money that we raise goes directly to Camp O'Bannon. We support them with $25,000 every year just from the Strawberry Festival and then other monies throughout the year. So that's what that all goes toward, and I just want to thank the city personally. Our president would be here tonight, but he has a family obligation, so I got stuck being the person. And then, also, this is our 100th anniversary for Newark Kiwanis. We will be celebrating that on September 8 at the Skylight, and we've set aside about $10,000 this year to help with different functions across the area. We're making a donation to the Newark City Schools backpack in the alley where they do the rally in the alley where they collect school supplies and stuff, so we're going to make a donation of $1,000 to them. But I have a check here tonight for $6,800 for the city of Newark for the Wells renovation project, and I'd like to give that to Mayor Hall so that you folks could use it for the city. You know, we don't, it's not, we did this because, you know, you folks support us so well, it's because it's the right thing to do. So I'd like to give this to the mayor, and I'd like to, again, on behalf of Newark Kiwanis, thank everybody for their support.
That'd be great. Thanks, Dave. Thank you, Dave. Sir?
Dwayne Anderson, 914B Empire Drive, Newark, Ohio. And this concerns the proposed new fire station on the west end and financing for the firefighters and such. Is it possible to get a copy of the 2017 Fire Department budget and expenses to look over?
Yeah, if you can give me your email, I can do that for you. Not right now, but when we get done.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay. Anyone else for this first section? You'll wait, you're going to wait. Okay. Let's move on to resolutions on the second reading, 18-49.
Resolution 18-49 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. LaButeus, and Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 18-49. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
I'd make a motion to adopt resolution 18-49.
Motion by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-49? Seeing none, honorable, please call the roll and vote.
Mr. LaButeus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
18-49 passes 9-0. Next on the second reading, we have 18-50.
Resolution 18-50 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. LaButeus, and Mr. Marmee. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service for the city of Newark, Ohio to enter into a lease agreement with Park National Bank for the lease purchase of four snowplow trucks for use in the division of streets.
You've heard the second reading of 18-50. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-50.
Motion by Mr. Rath.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-50? Seeing none, honorable, please call the roll and vote.
Mr. LaButeus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
18-50 passes 9-0. Next on the second reading, 18-51.
Resolution 18-51 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. LaButeus, Mr. Marmee. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service for the city of Newark, Ohio to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Park National Bank for the lease purchase of new high-efficiency street lighting through the U.S. Communities Purchase Program.
You've heard the second reading of 18-51. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-51.
Second by Mr. Rass, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-51? Seeing none, honorable, please call the roll and vote.
Mr. LaButeus.
Yes.
Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Fennell.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
18-51 passes 9-0. Next, we move on to resolutions on the first reading, 18-52.
Resolution number 18-52 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public safety for the city of Newark, Ohio to release the lien previously placed against the property located at and known as 444 Woods Avenue, Newark, Ohio.
18-52 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally, we have 18-53.
Resolution 18-53 by Mr. Cost and Mr. Marmee. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
And 18-53 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And that concludes our legislation this evening. Now we're down to our second option for comments from citizens. Ma'am?
Yes.
Anyone else like to speak a second time?
My name is Rochelle Voland-Smith. I'm at 237 Violet Court in Newark. The, um, this is hard, I'm sorry. It's, in looking at the national issue of immigration and how it's affecting Ohio, we've had over a number of years, a number of people being treated uncivilly by our And I would like to propose us adopting a resolution or a declaration. I have a suggested one that I'd like to read. I'll make it as short as possible. Whereas, this was designed by Representative Dan Ramos. Whereas, the United States of America is a nation that was built by immigrants, and whereas the state of Ohio has benefited greatly and continues to benefit from the hard work of immigrants, and whereas Ohio's economy relies on the labor of immigrants, and whereas the DNC platform, we believe that immigration enforcement must be humane and consistent with our values, and whereas, per the DNC platform, we should prioritize those who pose a threat for the safety of our communities, not hard-working families who are contributing to their communities. And whereas, the zero tolerance policy of President Trump has unnecessarily separated parents and their children at the southern border and through raids in Ohio, and caused these children to be locked and holding cells in cages and transported across state lines without parental consent, and whereas, there is currently no plan in place to reunite thousands of children separated from their parents at various immigration raids, and whereas, the zero tolerance policy of President Trump does not prioritize dangerous criminal elements and therefore makes the nation less safe, and whereas, this, the zero tolerance policy of President Trump has been condemned by leaders of both major political parties, humanitarian organizations, and leaders in the various faith communities. Therefore, let it be resolved that we, the executive community of the Ohio Democratic Party, condemn the actions of the Trump administration, which has caused the undue separation of children from their parents from the northern and southern border. And further, let it be resolved that we, the executive committee of the Ohio Democratic Party, declare that no innocent child in the United States should be taken from their parents and locked in a cage or other holding facility, nor should they be transported across state lines without parental consent. And further, let it be resolved that we memorialize the United States House of Representatives and the United States Senate to work together to create comprehensive immigration reform that respects the dignity of immigrants and respects the sanctity of the family unit and respects the needs of Ohio agricultural and other industries. We've had migrant workers in this vicinity being used as farm workers and landscape workers and so on, and I don't, I don't think they planned to come from the border to locate themselves in Ohio without some sort of help between. I think this whole thing is kind of a farce, and I would like to see Licking County make some sort of movement in support of the families that are being treated so wrongly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have some extra copies. I've distributed some, but I'm afraid I didn't.
If you want to give one to Dee, we'll give it to the clerk.
I did give one to Dee.
I'm sorry. You said you had a copy.
I did give a copy to Dee and several other people.
Pass it over this way, so I have the records.
Do you want some extra copies? How many do you need? I don't have enough for everybody.
Just one, I only need one.
Okay.
That way, if you have.
Give one back to Dee.
Here we go.
There you go.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dave.
Hey. Did I not say that?
I'm going to give it around the house.
I'm here. I'm sorry.
And you're done, isn't it?
I got it now. Just one.
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Second Street. I hadn't known about that resolution before I came up to speak, but I just wanted to speak in favor of that. Obviously, you want to make it more local and specific to city council and whatnot with all the references to the Democratic Party. But any community can speak in favor of treating our immigrant populations, no matter how they got here, at least with some dignity, as I believe all humans are entitled to. What I wanted to speak, actually, sort of consistent with that, is I wanted to clarify a position of mine regarding this whole Pearl Street Bridge thing, and I actually appreciate that St. Francis de Sales, some of their staff members came up here and spoke. Now, I don't come at this really that they believe that they are privileged or so. I just believe that they are coming at this the wrong way. Now, granted, there's some have a privileged mindset about this, for sure, but especially the teacher came up and spoke, I don't doubt that she wants to keep her students safe, or the parents of the parish want to keep their students safe. I mean, I, as a father of two children, want to keep my students safe, my children. They are, they are my top priority. And I actually, after we got done speaking, I pulled the teacher aside, and I talked to her, and wanted her to know that I stand beside them, that I'm wanting to keep their children safe. So if there's any way, maybe we do need to try and advocate for more funding or so. If there's any way that we can try and focus more on the areas where children are at, like the schools, whether they're curricular or public, try and boost, you know, our patrols or whatever around those areas, I'd be all in favor of that, and maybe be willing as a taxpayer to pay more in city taxes to make sure that our students are as safe as possible. So no matter whether they're private or public schools. So with that, I just wanted to clarify and just make sure everyone knows that I stand 100% with those parents and with the staff, and wanting to make sure they improve safety. I just think they're going about the wrong way with the proposed closing of the bridge. So, thank you.
Thank you. The Honorable City Administration this evening. Honorable Director Sasse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to clarify two issues that Ms. Beam raised in her comments earlier tonight. First of all, my relationship with Ms. Beam dates back to 2010, not 2011, April 11 specifically. More importantly, I don't want anyone up here to be of the understanding that Newark Police Department does not have jurisdiction in the county building. Newark Police Department has jurisdiction over every building, every square inch of property within the political boundaries of the city of Newark, and we have cooperation agreements with other departments, so under certain circumstances, they have jurisdiction even beyond those political boundaries. So just to clarify, when she states that Newark Police does not have jurisdiction in the county building, that is completely and totally untrue. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Director Sasse. Mayor Hall. I will pass this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. LaButeus.
I will pass this evening.
Mr. Marmee.
Mr. President, I need to call a finance committee meeting, and with that, I'll pass.
Mr. Rath.
Thank you. Dave, I just wanted to say congratulations on another great festival this year and a great success. Thank you for the check. We always appreciate that. And then I also wanted to thank you for yours and the Kiwanis generosity. You and I worked together on getting some kids from a group that's special to me some tickets and made it all, and we really appreciate, really appreciate your generosity, looking out for them. With that, I'll call the service committee meeting, and I'll pass.
Mr. Rath, Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to wish everyone a happy Independence Day. I mean, this week is, many celebrations are going on. I think there's fireworks in Heath tonight, and then tomorrow at OSU Newark, and then the Granville celebration's happening, so it's our country's 242nd birthday, I believe, so just hope that people take time to reflect on our history, but also celebrate where we are with our freedoms and things that were allowed, that other people, other citizens of the world aren't. I also want to thank Dave for presenting the check to Wells Park. That park is heavily used. I know people that, the park's in my ward, and so I know people that are using that all the time, and the much-needed improvements on what Director Rhodes and the Parks Department and everyone involved has improved that park. It's very much appreciated, so I know that there's going to be some plaque taken down there for the Kiwanis, and so thank you for your participation with that. And then everyone who spoke tonight, either at committee or here tonight at council on the various different issues, you know, one of the things that we celebrate this week with the Fourth of July and Independence Day is the courage to speak in our public venues and before our public bodies, and so everyone who spoke on the various topics, and that's something that we need to cherish and that we need to reflect on. to cherish and that we need to reflect on. So with that, I'll yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub.
I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Bub, Mr. Cos.
First of all, I would like to say I thought the discussion tonight was very good. I thought there was a lot of good information. I would certainly be in favor of looking at the possibilities of more enforcement in the areas that were discussed. I think that would be helpful. I know there are needs just like that all over the city, and I think we could take a look at those areas and see what could be done. Also, as a full disclosure, the discussion about a sidewalk going south of the new bridge, that discussion started the day we cut the ribbon. When we walked off that bridge and across the walkway and found ourselves in a grassy knoll, we started that, Ms. Floyd and I both stood and discussed it, look at a sidewalk that go down that side of the street and go down to Locust. And that is being addressed and being dealt with and seeing what we can do to make that happen. That I will pass. You're talking about right on Hartland Bank? Yes, right from the bridge down to Hartland Bank on the, it would be the west side going south.
Thank you. Mr. Fennell?
I guess I'd also like to thank everybody who spoke tonight. And the bridge in question is in the seventh coordinate. It's clear that there is something that needs to happen, but there is trouble on both sides of that bridge. I do not believe right now that closing the bridge is the answer, but I am more than happy to have a town hall to continue discussions and continue working with the parish. I mean, it's clear that something needs to happen. I really want to be a part of that discussion, so I just think we need to continue working together and trying to continue that conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Fennell. Mr. Frazier, welcome back.
Thank you. Good to be back. Thank you to Mr. Cos for excusing me last week. I appreciate it, all the video. So I just wanted to congratulate the administration on the progress they're making on Floyd Park and Everett Park. There's been substantial work done by the Licking County Foundation, as well as the other foundations, and it really is a marked improvement for our community and it's something for us to be proud of. Tackling a lot of big issues tonight, from the Pearl Street Bridge to immigration. So as far as the Pearl Street Bridge is concerned, I use the bridge when I bicycle down to UDF with my wife. And we live in that area and we absolutely use it and we like to use it. But that being said, having incidents where children are involved with weapons and drug activity in open-air drug markets on a bridge should absolutely be addressed by this body and by this community. And we absolutely have to do something about it, whether it's more discussion, more patrols, temporary closings, something has to be done to break the trend that's going on there. And I think that it's absolutely a priority for our community, as well as addressing the response of our safety forces to that area. And then also, when it comes to immigration, I have a very unique perspective when it comes to immigration. I have a family member who's been working for ICE for about 35 years. And I think genuinely, the media misses the fact of the individuals that work for the Immigration and Customs Enforcement side of it, that actually do care about the people that they're working with and they actually do try to do what's best for them. And when it comes to the resolution, I, we typically don't do non-binding resolutions because it's a little bit too political for us and it costs money and we want to focus on what the work of the city is. And so thank you for bringing that forward today, but I would not support a non-binding resolution, especially one written by the Democratic National Committee. But I appreciate you bringing that forward to our attention for discussion. With that, I'll yield.
Mr. Frazier, Ms. Hall?
Thank you. I just want to wish everybody is safe coming into July. It's supposed to be a nice day. You have a lot of motorcycles out and a lot of people out and about. Just be safe and enjoy. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Thank you for your attention tonight. City Hall again will be closed Wednesday, July 4th, for the holiday. Our next poll meeting, our committee will be 5:45 on the 16th of July. And our field council will start at 7:00.